You are now live.
Good evening, members and officers. It's now 7pm. My name is Liz Elliot and I'm the Managing Director of the Borough Council of Wellingborough. And I'd like to welcome you all this evening to this inaugural meeting of the Shadow Council of Wellingborough Town Council. Could I ask that you make sure that your microphones are muted and this will avoid any interference in the meeting? And may I remind you that this is a virtual meeting protocol, will be in place, that you've previously seen, as this meeting is now live and streaming. So I'd like to also welcome any members of the public who are joining us tonight. I'd also like to welcome Danny Moody and Lesley Sandbrook-Smith, who are from NCALC, and they will be helping us and giving us advice as necessary through this first meeting. You'll be aware that this inaugural meeting is being held virtually and I'd be grateful for your patience should we encounter any technical issues. And for the benefits of those observing, we are using MSTMS platform for streaming and conducting this meeting. I thought it'd be useful just to recap about how we've arrived at this meeting tonight for members and those of the viewing public. A reorganisation order was put before members and approved by the council in February 2019. The order originally proposed that a shadow council would be in place for a period of approximately six weeks, from the 1st of April 2020, the original date of the Unitary Vesting Day, and the dissolution of the Borough Council of Wellingborough, until the annual council meeting of the Wellingborough Town Council following the next ordinary day of elections. Now, the next ordinary day of elections would have been the 7th of May 2020, but due to the Covid pandemic, legislation was passed which amended the next ordinary day of elections to May 2021, the 6th of May 2021. That means that the Shadow Council, instead of being in place for six weeks, will be in place for a little bit longer and that the members as put forward from that Community Governance Review will be holding that position as Shadow Councillors for that period of time. Thank you, members. I hope that you found that little recap useful. So we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the election of a chairman. So please, could I have any nominations for the election of chairman for the Shadow Council, along with a seconder? Please could you use the meeting chat to identify who you would like to nominate? Or who you would like to second? And we will then have a look and see who has been nominated and conduct a poll accordingly. councillor Bell, I've got that you'd like to speak. I was expecting the chat function to be used for the nominations. Did you want to speak to nominate?
Oh, sorry, I'd like to use the chat. Yes, I'd like to nominate councillor Laura Lawman, please.
Okay, do I have a seconder for councillor Laura Lawman?
Yes, I'd like to second Laura Lawman, please.
Thank you. And I also have councillor Scarborough that's put a second in the chat. Thank you. Do I have any other nominations for the position of chairman? Okay, so I have nothing in the chat and I have nobody indicating that they wish to make any further nominations, which makes our life a little bit easier. Because now we only have one nomination, we can do the vote through the affirmative process. So could I please ask, that in the usual manner that we're accustomed to, that we show our... Make our votes clear now for the vote for approval of councillor Laura Lawman to be the chairman. For those of you who wish to abstain or to vote against, please indicate in the chat. Please unmute your mics now and vote.
Aye.
Okay, we'll just have a couple of minutes for any further comments in the chat function. Okay, that's good. We've got three members abstaining in the chat function, but that goes through. Thank you very much for that. So we've had the nominations, we've had the vote and so I would like to now congratulate councillor Laura Lawman on becoming the chairman of the Shadow Council for the Wellingborough Town Council. I believe councillor Griffith, she would like to say a few words while our democratic service officers send some information through to the new chairperson.
Thank you very much, Liz, and I would like to congratulate councillor Lawman on her appointment as the Chair of the Shadow Town Council. Laura is, I'm sure she won't mind me saying, a seasoned councillor and I'm sure she will do an excellent job. The Shadow Council has the very important task of making sure the town council is set up for success following the elections in May of next year. It's worth just reminding ourselves why we created this council. When it was certain that local government reform was set to be delivered in Northamptonshire, we wanted to make sure that all the people of our borough had local representation that was close to their communities. Wellingborough was the only part of the borough that wasn't already parished and to ensure that our residents had a local voice and local democracy was maintained, we set in motion the Community Governance Review to create the town council. We had a few delays due to the ongoing Covid pandemic situation and the cancellation of the planned elections for 2020, but we are on track. Other councils are watching this very closely, of course, in Northamptonshire. And this meeting is the first important step towards achieving our objective and creating a council that those elected to it can shape what they want for Wellingborough at that local level. It will start small, like an acorn that grows to a mighty oak, or like a signet that matures into an adult swan. And I hope that in time, the Wellingborough Town Council will become a key strategic partner in the new landscape of local government and that it continues with the excellent work that the borough has done to enhance the lives of those residents that it represents. Thank you for your indulgence, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to thank the fellow councillors for electing me tonight as the first chairman of the Shadow Council for the Town Council of Wellingborough. I'm deeply honoured that you've put this trust in me and I hope to do just deserve in my functions. Yes, councillor Griffith, I am a seasoned councillor with seventeen and a half years behind me. But thank you very much indeed. I understand councillor Scarborough would like to speak.
Good, I'll come in there, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to say that your appointment to this post is particularly welcome to the Labour Group. We had a long discussion about this last night and one of the key things that struck us was the importance that the Shadow Authority should be led by somebody from one of the town wards. We recognise that person would come from the administration. We know councillor Lawman, your splendid record in standing up for the residents of your ward. I will just think back about the long endless struggle for leeway shops, which great to be impressed us. And so we're delighted you're in post.
Thank you very much, councillor Scarborough. I do apologise, I'm just about able to read the information that has just been sent to me. Yes, a second.
Could I speak sometime, Chair?
Yes, of course, cons.
Sorry, I lost the link. Can you hear me? Sorry, I lost the link. But I'm quite happy to say thank you and congratulations on this position. Okay, I know we haven't always seen eye to eye, but I wish you all the best. Sorry, I lost the link as we were going to vote. And so my vote might not have been recorded, but it could be forwarded. I appreciate it. So I miss Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Could I have, first of all, the apologies for absence? Do we have any apologies, please?
Councillor Lawman, I think we have apologies from councillor Abram. Yep. And I can't see on the list of attendees councillor Francis.
No.
Or councillor Graves?
Councillor Francis isn't available tonight.
Thank you, councillor Graves.
Councillor Watts as well.
Yeah.
Councillor Watts has sent her apologies because she's suffering from cold.
Thank you. And councillor Wallier, I can't see either.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. May I take the opportunity now to move on to item three, the appointment of a vice chairman? Are there any nominations for vice chairman? If so, then please indicate.
Could we do declarations of interest first, please, Madam Chairman?
I do apologise. Yeah, we may. We swap those items round and I take item four, declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations, please? If you have any declarations, if you would please indicate them in the chat. I take that there are none and therefore I would like to turn back to the appointment of a vice chairman and nominations for the vice chairman, please. And I understand councillor Bell, you would like to speak?
Aye. Right, just trying to unmute. Yes, thank you for Madam Chairman, congratulations on your appointment. I'd like to propose, I'd probably beat his colleagues councillor Scarborough as vice chairman of the town Shadow Authority.
Thank you. Is there a seconder for that?
I could second that, Chair. Thank you.
Is that councillor Aslam seconding it?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you. Are there nominations? Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? If I'd right to turn that to a vote, if you are against or abstaining, would you please indicate in the chat? Otherwise, please unmute yourself and in the usual fashion, I would like to hear again.
Yes, agree.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. We then turn to item five, the report of the Managing Director of the Borough Council of Wellingborough to seek approval to the adoption of the model framework of documents to include the model standing orders, the financial regulations and the Member Officer Protocol for the Wellingborough Town Council, the Shadow Council. Miss Elliot, would you like to introduce that report, please?
Thank you. Councillors, before you, the report, appended to the report is the documentation which will enable the Shadow Council to operate legally. The documents are the model standing orders, financial regulations and the Member and Officer Protocol provided by NCALC, which are comprehensive and will be living in documents and can be reviewed and updated as the Shadow Council evolves and we start to take on more functions and form. The recommendation is that these be agreed and adopted by you tonight. I have nothing further to add and I'm happy to take any questions. And I would also invite my colleagues, Mr Moody and Mrs Sandbrook-Smith, to answer any questions on the governance procedures as NCALC have provided these standard documents for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the officers from NCALC or the members of NCALC wish to make any comments now? Or would you like to wait until members' matters arise?
I don't have any comments to make, Madam Chairman. Happy to take questions from members as they arise.
Okay, thank you. And I can see councillor Carr would like to speak.
Thank you councillor Lawman. Just for viewing public, Danny, could you just explain to everybody what NCALC actually stands for and what your role and your purpose is? I know we've got a viewing public and I'm never very keen on using acronyms or anything, but people perhaps don't know who you are and what you are and what you stand for, Danny.
Thank you councillor Carr. Are you talking about corporately or personally?
However, I'd like to do it. I think to start with, what does NCALC stand for, to be fair?
Yeah, so NCALC stands for the Northamptonshire County Association of Local Councils and it's the membership body for all of the parish and town councils in Northamptonshire. And then there's a county association in each county in England and we're affiliated to NALC, which is the National Association of Local Councils based in London. So as a membership organisation, we really have a number of different facets to our service. One is free at the point of use legal advisory service. So any question that a parish or town council has, they can come to our organisation and ask it. If it's something that is outside my capability or my deputy's capability to answer, we have the ability to escalate that to the legal team at the National Association of Local Councils. So advice and guidance. The second part of it is training. So clearly, nobody's born to, as a councillor or a clerk. So we provide training, starting from basic level training right the way through to degrees and even masters in community governance. And then the third strand to the bow is lobbying and representation. Never more important than at the moment with local government reorganisation going on in the county. And we are the voice of parish and town councils, so we're engaging with the LGR programme team and the Borough District and County Councils to represent the views and interests of parish and town councils in the county.
Thank you very much. Could you, for my benefit, could you answer whether NCALC are totally independent of any political party? And this is really an answer for those who may be watching this on YouTube.
Yes, completely independent, we're apolitical.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers on this matter? Any comments relating to the reports of the model standing orders, all the financial regulations and the very, very important Member and Officer Protocol that I think we are all very accustomed to and forms the basis of any work between officers and members?
Madam Chairman, I come in here briefly.
Yes, of course.
With a question to Danny. How are the subscriptions calculated? Because obviously, town council is very different to a parish council and some of the parish councils and parish meetings are even smaller. And I just wondered how the subscription banding works.
It depends on the size of the council. So for most councils, the subscription is based on electorate. But you get to a point where there's a cap. So the first cap is introduced at 10,000 electors and then the second cap is introduced at 30,000 electors. So Wellingborough Town Council and the other new councils that will be formed in Northamptonshire have that cap applied. And just looking at my fees here, so the cap for super councils, as we call them, 30,000 plus electors is increased from 469557 to 474722 for next year. And then on top of that, the council pays a per elector subscription to the National Association of Local Councils as well. So the total membership subscription for Wellingborough Town Council is 688557.
Thank you, Mr Moody.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councillor Emerson first?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That was a while ago and my colleague
Okay, sorry.
got in in front of me. My other comment was directly to the leader of Wellingborough Council.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Griffith?
Just to say, thank you for the report and that clarification from Mr Moody. I'm happy to propose agenda item five, four and 4.1, Madam Chairman.
Do we have a seconder for that, please?
I'd like to second that, to find me, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Harrington, to second that. All in favour? Please unmute yourself and show your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Agreed.
Any abstentions or against, please indicate in the chat.
Madam Chair, there's loads of speakers and got their camera on, I don't know why.
That's very true. We have got...
That's because we've reached the... We can only show nine pictures at a time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's nine people on the screen, but there's no councillor Harrington or Martin Griffiths.
Councillor Griffith is right at the top of my screen.
Yeah, when they start speaking, they'll be moved up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure we haven't lost anybody. Okay, that is item five concluded. Item six, the report of the Managing Director of the Borough Council of Wellingborough to seek approval, a) for the establishment of two committees and the membership there too, the appointment of an interim clerk until such time as alternative arrangements are in place to agree the future meetings, to renew membership of the Northamptonshire County Association of Local Councils to the current here, which is NCALC, and open a bank account with Unity Trust Bank in the name of Wellingborough Town. Would you like to introduce your report, Miss Elliot?
Yes, thank you. I'm terribly sorry, I just had to turn off my speaker for a while. Did we do a proposal and a seconder for that last item? I missed it. I'm sorry about that. That's brilliant. Okay, fine. So this next item then is with regard to setting up committees for the Shadow Council. The report proposes two committees to be created, one a finance governance committee and one staffing committee. The report recommends the proposed membership of those committees and the terms of reference also state that the chairman of the Shadow Town Council is represented on both of those committees as one of those members but isn't automatically made the chair. The chair will be elected by those committees at their first meeting from within the membership of that meeting. We're also asking for substitutes for those committees so that we can make sure we are core at all times. The report also seeks to appoint an interim clerk until such time as alternative arrangements are in place and it's proposed that the very capable Carol Monday is to take on the role for a short period of time to assist with the creation and the startup of the council, supported by the project team that has been working tirelessly on this for a number of months now, Sam Whiteley, Julia Wells and Fiona Hubbard. The dates of the future meetings is also listed in the report, along with the renewal of the membership for NCALC up until April 2021. This is all what we've been pre-scheduled for and so we have that in our budget, so to speak. It's also intended that the finance team at the Borough Council, who will be providing the finance support in the interim, will open a bank account for the town council with Unity Bank. I don't have anything further to add to the report and again, I am supported by Mr Moody and Mrs Sandbrook-Smith, who will answer any questions that members may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Elliot. My first comment is, if I can turn your attention to page number two in the Propositions Resolutions 4.6, there's an error. Note the dates for future meetings as detailed at 6.8. If you turn to 6.8, it is actually, it should read 6.9, the dates of the future meetings. And there was one other area. No, that is fine. Could I have... Does any member, first of all, want to speak? And I can see councillor Bell would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Two things, and you know I'm going to speak about this. I know we can't transfer it at the present time, but I don't want us to forget that Sponable House and Gardens was gifted to the old urban district council many last century. And I'm sure it's one of the first things that we can build a business case. We will be seeking to be returned from the unitary apartment, no cost, to the town council if it so decides. I also have number... I'd like to make a slight amendment to the committee's suggestion that instead of five, we have seven, which is five and two. And I've got the concerted names and there should be substitutions. But I do have the concerted names of the two committees. With your permission, Madam Chairman, I'll just read out the names for the staffing committee. Councillors Bell, Lawman, L, Graves, Harrington, Carr. For the finance, councillor G Lawman, councillor L Lawman, councillor Ward, councillor Alabone, councillor Webberall or councillor Hallen, one of those will be the reserves. That's how we have at the moment. I'll so move those to the committee, Madam Chairman.
Do you have a seconder for those nominations, please?
I'm sure someone will put their hand up.
Yes, I'll second those nominations and those proposals and the amendments, Madam Chairman.
Do we have any nominations from the Labour Group, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I just say before I make our nominations? Obviously, the paper talks about five members, three Conservatives, two Labour. From our side, we recognise that proportionality on the new council is slightly over two to one in favour of the Conservative administration and therefore, in our view, seven with five two is perfectly fair and we're happy with that. For the staffing committee, Labour will nominate councillor Aslam and councillor Anzlo with councillor Maguire as a substitute if needed. And for the finance governance committee, councillor Henley and councillor Francis, with myself as substitute if needed.
Thank you very much. Councillor Scarborough, do you have a seconder from your group for that as well, please?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We're all unmuted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
If you...
Councillor Emerson.
Do we have any other comments on this report, please? I take that as a no. In that case, could you please unmute yourself and show hands if you're in favour, if you are against or abstaining?
Chairman, so I'm trying to type but struggling.
Yes, councillor Lawman.
Can I ask the officers why we are looking at using Unity Trust Bank, who are a bank unknown to us and we don't have a relationship and also don't, as far as I'm aware, have any local branches? I think they're internet only to, should we need to deposit cash or have other local arrangements? I'm not aware very much of them. I'd like some information on them, please.
Can NALC advise on that, please? Because they advised us to do that.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, Unity Trust Bank is the bank of choice for parish and town councils. All payments that parish and town councils make are required to be signed by two members of the council. All payments that parish and town councils make are required to be signed by two members of the council and there are very few online bank accounts that give dual or triple authority. Unity Trust is one of them and it's an ethical banks and set up specifically for parish and town councils and community groups and charities and so on. And the only other account that I'm aware of is Lloyd's. Unity Trust Bank is used by Northants CAC. We've been with them for, I think, about eight or nine years and I would estimate probably 50% to two thirds of the parish and town councils in Northamptonshire and beyond use Unity Trust Bank. So in terms of track record and, you know, whether they're known or not and so on, that's not a problem at all. So really, it was a choice between Unity Trust and Lloyd's as far as setting up a bank account and we recommended Unity Trust.
Thank you, Mr Moody. First of all, councillor Maguire and then councillor Griffith.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just get back Danny Moody's comments. The Unity Bank is the best one. Lloyd's don't always like parish council accounts like NatWest and the Anglo Bank, so I think it's a good decision to go with this. But it's not my choice, it's the council's choice.
Thank you councillor Maguire. Councillor Griffith?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was going to suggest that 4.6 be delegated to the new committee. But having heard Danny Moody's response, I think that perfectly sums up the situation. So I'll withdraw that suggestion before I even make it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Griffith. Are there any other comments, please? No. In that case, can we move and resolve the proposed action in 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5 and 4.6 with the amendment of 6.9 rather than 6.8? And do we have somebody to move it, please?
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second. Second.
Thank you. Please unmute yourself. Unmute yourself and show your hands in favour if you are against or abstaining. Please show in the chat.
Agreed.
Aye.
Thank you. That is agreed. And that concludes our business for tonight. Congratulations to Mrs Mundie for being our interim clerk. We look forward to continue to work with you and with the extended team. Thank you very much. I would like also to thank the representatives from MCAUC for attending tonight and assisting us in our newfound town council or Shadow Council. It is quite an adventure for all of us and I'm quite sure that irrespective of our political parties or persuasions, that we can all work very well together for the future and for our residents who have put us here to start with. It is a golden opportunity and together with everybody, we can shape this future. So in the old borough model, forward together and at 7.34, I would like to close this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.